About how much unspent dollars we have, we think there'll be probably close to $2 million. But we still have some bills in the pipeline. Once we know that, then the plan was to come out with a utility program and a security and first month's rent program. However, yesterday at 3:15, I received notification that Governor Taft in his State of the State address has unveiled a new program called Project THAW. And evidently, this is supposed to be implemented on Monday, January 29th, which I believe is next Monday. And we're supposed to administer it. And it's a TANA fund. He's committed $25 million of TANA funds to families at below 200 percent of poverty, plus $20 million from the general revenue funds for individuals. So I'm thinking that's probably seniors or single adults. Again, 200 percent of poverty. And we're to take applications, determine eligibility, and the person would receive up to 50 percent of the cost incurred, or a maximum of $250 on utility, a heating bill. We still don't have any of the detail. So I guess everything's kind of on hold until we get further clarification from Columbus. But basically, what I wanted to address today is how we wanted to spend the unspent dollars once we figure out how much we have, and then maybe we'd be able to do something in conjunction with the governor's new initiative. But all this has to be done by June 30th of this year. So we're going to be very busy at 4248-5 North Gateway, or North Ridge Road.
I think when you said everything's on hold, you're not referring to this project, but just Governor Taft?
No, Governor Taft's probably going to be moving forward. Until we get the details on that program, we're not going to come out with our utility assistance program, because we certainly want to complement what they're doing. $250 with today's heating bills probably isn't a whole lot of money. So we might be able to supplement that, is our hope.
I just don't want people not to show up on Monday. People still should show up on Monday.
No, no, no. Please do not, we cannot handle a lot. We estimate that there probably be about 10,000 households that would probably be eligible for this.
Fantastic. Get there early.
Yeah. I hope somebody's going to come over and direct traffic for us. You have any questions?
I see that Tracy Bennett is here. Does Tracy want at least to introduce herself to the board and state her position, because she works very closely with your office?
Good morning. I'm Dr. Tracy Bennett. I'm the Deputy Account Manager for the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services in the Cleveland District Office. And it's very nice to meet you and answer any questions if you have.
Thank you for coming this morning, Tracy. I'm sure that you'll be working with Mary Lou as we work towards implementing this program.
Very closely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Lou, I do have one question, please. The PRC money, is there money available in there for people that will be getting evicted?
Yes, that's what the security deposit and first month's rent would be. It would supplement what FEMA is currently doing. I guess they get about $127,000 every quarter of FEMA dollars, and those dollars are probably spent within the first month. So there were-
But these are not people that need a down payment?
No, no.
I mean, a security deposit or first month-
They're moving from one apartment to another apartment, because it's closer to where they work, or their family. You know, they just had a child, and they need two bedrooms, and they only had one bedroom, that kind of-
No, I'm talking about people that are already in an apartment or home that might get evicted, because they don't have the rent. Is there money available through PRC for that?
Just rental assistance?
Yes.
Maybe in the conventional program. I can't, they'd have to have an eviction notice for us to probably assist them, and we would assist them with one month's rent, I believe. And we'd only assist them if their finances would allow them to continue to pay their rent. If they're in an apartment that's too expensive, we kind of review all that with them. Then we assist them into relocating into something that they can live with in their budget.
But there is some money available there for these people?
I believe so, that they're, as long as they have an eviction notice.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, both Mary Lou and Tracy. And we'll return to item number C on the agenda, which is the county administrator's report.
I think I have had enough to say for today. Thank you.
Okay, is this the county prosecutor, Mr. Mangen?
I have one question.
Okay, President's report.
I just, the commissioners, I would like to announce that the commissioners have prepared a letter to be forwarded to Gordon Proctor, who is the Ohio Department Transportation Director and the TRAC Chairman regarding the TRAC funding for Lorraine County for this year. And I have distributed copies of this letter to the news media. The letter reads that, as outlined in your December 14th, excuse me, in your December 14th, 2000, letter to Noaka, no Lorraine County projects were chosen for TRAC funding. This is disturbing to us for a number of reasons. Number one, while TRAC has placed a priority on state interstate and U.S. routes, we do not believe that this information was originally outlined as being a significant criteria. Number two, both Lorraine County projects submitted, Aluria's Industrial Parkway and Lorraine's Tower Boulevard, have significant importance to each city and to the county as a whole, and were chosen for submission by our ad hoc seven-member Lorraine County contingent of Noaka members. Number three, according to public statement made by Ron Eckner at Noaka's January 12th meeting, this is the second year in a row that no Lorraine County project has been selected for TRAC funding. We are aware that you are recommending an urban paving policy study and find this suggestion to have merit. However, all of Lorraine County's nine cities, seven villages, and 18 townships, in combination with the county, need to access all of the state assistance that we can in keeping our highways in good repair. Since the public comment period for the TRAC project runs through April 15th, 2001, we are taking this opportunity to voice our displeasure with the exclusion of Lorraine County projects. As outlined in the attached Chronicle January 18th editorial quote, "Local officials have noticed the many warning shots signaling that the county's long economic boom may be starting to go kaboom," end quote. This is signed respectfully, Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, by the three commissioners. And we are forwarding copies to the governor, to all of the state TRAC members, to Noaka, to our county representatives to Noaka, to our congressmen, our state senator, our three state representatives, and the mayors of the city of Aluria and Lorraine. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Commissioner's report?
I just have a point for information in possible short discussion, but I did want to let you know that I talked with Jim about looking into AAA services for the vehicle, the county vehicle fleet.
I haven't had an opportunity to do that yet, Commissioner, but it's on my agenda. I hope to be able to bring something back within the next few weeks. I understand your desire is that if one of our vehicles becomes disabled outside of Lorraine County, that the employee has at least has an option other than standing in the rain looking for a ride home. So I'll be working on that.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Do you wish to?
No.
Thank you. I believe it is 11:15, and at 11:15, we have scheduled a public hearing on the proposed annexation of approximately 53 acres in Columbia Township to the city of Strongsville, Ohio. James Kokinda, agent for petitioners. Petition was submitted to this office on November 7th, 2000, for the proposed annexation of approximately 53 acres in Columbia Township to the city of Strongsville, Ohio. Petition was filed with the county auditor and engineer. The engineer reviewed the accuracy of petition and map, and by report dated November 10th, indicated the legal description has one course, C-O-A-R-S-E, direction to change. Mr. Kokinda resubmitted the corrected legal description. The engineer again reviewed, and by letter dated December 5th, 2000, indicated the description follows the map, and both are correct. The land is adjacent and contiguous to the city of Strongsville. Commissioners by Resolution Number 00978 adopted December 14th, 2000, received petition and map, and scheduled this public hearing. The city of Strongsville, Ohio submitted Resolution Number 2001-1, which indicated the services Strongsville will provide to the territory sought to be annexed, if granted. Resolution Number 2001-1 will become effective pursuant to their charter on February 15th, 2001. At this point in time, before anyone makes a presentation, I would like to ask anyone who will either make a statement, or a comment, or have a question, to be sworn in by our Assistant Prosecutor. This is simply a matter of formality, but it is required in our public hearing. So anyone who is going to have anything to say, if you would please stand and be sworn at this time.
Please raise your hands. Each and every one of you. That's the final standing. Before we tell the truth, we'll help you, God. We should, we should.
Sit to the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Mangen. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. James Kokinda to come forward and to make a brief statement of the project. And if you are able to, you may also wish to stipulate to compliance with the Ohio Revised Code sections that apply to this request, and that all documentation was properly filed according to statute.
Madam President, and this is the Board of Commissioners. We welcome the opportunity to be present today. We brought attorney Mark O'Brien, the property owner, John Carney, a planner Larry Finch, and the developer from Park Group, Mr. Chris Bender. The Carney family has long owned much land in Columbia Township. In fact, we have over 300 acres. We have been, for more than 40 years, they have owned this property. They've been paying taxes on this property due Columbia Township to Lorraine County. Have never once applied for the discounted taxes that their land would qualify for as being classified as farmland. Several years ago, the county, Lorraine County, hired a consultant to update 32-year-old comprehensive plan for Lorraine County for future growth. Our proposal to seek sewers and annexation to the city of Strongsville to develop our land is in compliance with this consultant's recommendations for future growth. Your own plan called for the outward migration from Cuyahoga County. This updated plan was submitted to the county just this past June, June of 2000. Unfortunately, for Lorraine County, Columbia Township trustees have chosen a path of resisting growth. They've been, they changed their zoning from one acre lots to two acre lots. It makes much of the land in Columbia Township worthless to some of the property owners. They refused to join in the sewer district until just recently, after our annexation petitions were brought forth. And it's just been totally contrary to development. After 40 years, we feel that it's our right to develop our land. The annexation of the city of Strongsville won't have an adverse effect on the regional sewer district. It simply needs just to be excluded from the sewer district, once sewers and services are granted from the city of Strongsville. The land will forever remain in Lorraine County. There have been some that have said that, you know, we want to secede from the county. That simply is not true. The land is in Lorraine County. The only one that can take it out of Lorraine County is the state legislature. In fact, the land will remain as part of Columbia Township. There have been misconceptions on that, unless the city of Strongsville at a future date would seek to secede. My father served 28 years as a clerk of Sheffield Township, yet he lived in the city of Lorraine all his life. Lorraine was, Sheffield Township was part of the city, just like this area will still be part of Columbia Township, even though it's in the city limits of Strongsville. Sheffield Township is a good example of that. This is not unique to our land, or to Lorraine County. They have a city limits in two separate counties. The city of Vermillion, as all of us are aware, is in two separate counties. Part of it is in Erie County, part of it is in Lorraine County. The plan on this acreage is to develop single-family homes, similar to those at Bristol Point in Westwood Farms, which was developed by Mr. Bender's company. The base sales price on these homes is estimated to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $225,000, which would generate 35, in excess of $3,500 in annual taxes per home. Much of this, in excess of $131,000, would be additional revenue to Lorraine County government, with no services required from the county. The services will be provided by the city of Strongsville. So the Lorraine County would be gaining tax dollars and tax revenue. In addition, there's going to be nearly $395,000 to the school district that would be generated from our development. So the bottom line is, it's our land, we're the only owner, the only property owners of it. We seek to get the city services that are being offered from the city of Strongsville and to annex to the city of Strongsville. It's the best use of our land, we believe, and we seek to be able to develop it. So in conclusion, you know, we're complying with your county comprehensive plan that you've hired consultants to advise you on. We're going to generate additional tax revenue to the county. And after 40 years of ownership in the Carney family, it's time that we develop our land, and that you give us the permission to annex to the city of Strongsville, to receive their city services, and move forward with development of our land. Thank you very much. We're happy, our team is happy to be here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Kokinda. Before you exit the microphone, do either you or attorney Mark O'Brien wish to stipulate that you are in compliance with all of the requirements of the Ohio Revised Code sections that relate to this issue?
Mark, would you care to address that and stipulate? I believe that we have.
I'm Mark O'Brien, Grand Island Simon &amp; Company, LPA, representing the petitioners, where our address is 737 Bolivar Road, Cleveland, Ohio 44115. Our phone number is 2162740260. Yeah, we stipulate that we have complied with all of the requirements of Ohio Revised Code Section 709.033. And to that effect, I do have an affidavit from the Chronicle Telegram referring to the publication of the legal notice in this matter. And I think that's the last thing that your secretary Roxanne Blair needs for this petition.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. I just want to go over through, there are a couple other items here. This is kind of standard form that the commissioners have used in the past. It refers to Section 709.02. Is the real estate adjacent to a municipal operation?
Yes.
And is petition signed by a majority of the owners of the real estate?
Yes, it is.
Do we have a full description and accurate map of the territory?
Yes, we do.
And do we have the name of the person to act as agent for the petitioners?
Yes, we do.
And 709.03, is, when was the petition filed with this office? Have we filed it with the county auditor? We've done that.
Yes.
Did the agent cause written notice of the filing of the petition with us and the date of such filing to be delivered to the municipality and the township?
Yes.
And 709.031, is this hearing today, not less than 60, nor more than 90 days after the filing of a petition with the county auditor?
That is correct.
And did the agent cause a notice containing the substance of the petition and the time and place where it would be held to be published? And I believe that's what you've just given to Roxanne.
Yes.
And did the agent, within seven days after we set the time and place of the hearing, deliver a copy of the notice to the clerk of the township and municipality?
Yes.
Did the municipality pass an ordinance adopting a statement indicating what services it will provide to the territory sought to be annexed?
Yes.
And we do have the comments of the engineer regarding the accuracy of the map and the subject territory. And finally, the hearing. Parties may call witnesses. We'll get to that. This is the hearing, okay? I believe, thank you. Do you have a statement you would like to make?
Just for the record, we would like to make it very clear that the, Mr. Carney, that is the primary owner of this land, is not related to our county engineer, Mr. Ken Carney.
Well, and thank you for that notation. And since we have a large audience today, I would like to note that Roxanne Blair, the clerk to the Lorraine County Board of Elections, is not related to me. And she's very happy about that. Thank you, Mr. Kokinda. At this time, I would like to ask the county engineer for his statement.
Ken Carney, Lorraine County Engineer, office address 247 Hattaway, homes 45244, Quail Hall Court, Amherst Township. I'm basically here to generally ask, answer any and all questions that may surface. They may surface after I speak. I'm going to be very brief. This, as a county engineer, I deal with annexation now as accuracy of a surveying level of the map, and I've given you that determination. And the duties of sanitary sewer engineer, there are no sewers presently there. There is a plan by Northeast Ohio Sanitary, Regional Sanitary District, that plans in effect. That area is part of their design management area, also termed their future planning area. And they hold a responsibility to service that area. We have information from Mr. Vidra from Noaka that echoes that, that this is the service area. In order to receive sewers from other areas, it just requires permission from the county commissioners to delete that area, grant that permission to enter into a different sanitary sewer district, and generally receive Noaka's approval. And that's the gist of the sanitary sewer area. Do you have any questions?
Not at this time. I think we'll proceed, if that's all right with you. I would like to, thank you, Mr. Carney. I would like at this time to ask if any of the Columbia Township trustees present would like to make a statement.
Madam Chairman, I'm attorney Al Strader, representative of the actual program.
Good morning, Mr. Strader. Please come forward.
Before I give an opening statement, I would like to move that you dismiss the case on the basis that they have not complied with 709.02 or 709.033 regarding that resolution of services. You have in your file a letter from the city council clerk, who honestly and forthrightly told you that the resolution, though it contains an emergency clause, which would have violated their charter, by the way, that it did not pass as an emergency, and therefore is not effective until February 15, I believe. Now, I know how George Bush felt when Al Gore walked around.
I just know my presence is going to be required here in moments, so I thought-
I don't know if we party quite that closely.
Start calling you W.
I hate to pour the statute to you, but I'm going to have to. Here's the problem. Case law is pretty clear that you have to decide based on the evidence before you. You got an ordinance that's not an ordinance yet, because it's not effective. And to best understand that, I think, it's kind of like, as you're very familiar with, I noticed there was some discussion earlier of Governor Taft's speech. Well, God bless him, what he says doesn't become law until the legislature passes it and becomes a statute. Until then, it's an idea, then it's a bill. But until it's effective, it's not a statute, and it doesn't get printed in this statute book, and it doesn't become law. Well, similarly, an ordinance doesn't become an ordinance until it's effective. And let me explain, the reason that that's important is that if you look at 709.032B, it says, "Upon receiving this notice, the municipal legislative authority shall, by ordinance or resolution, adopt a statement indicating what services, if any, the municipal corporation will provide to the territory proposed for annexation upon annexation." So it has to be by a resolution or ordinance. It can't just be a letter. It can't be, gee, this will be effective 30 days from now, or whatever. Why is that practically important? It's practically important, because number one, this hearing is likely to close today. It pretty much has to, because we're close to the end of the 90-day limit. There's no ability to get further evidence in after we close the hearing, and there's no ability really to continue it all the way until February 15th, when this ordinance might become effective. Now, why do I say it might become effective? Because one of the reasons for that 30 days, and by the way, this ordinance passed by a four-to-three vote, the barest majority you can get on a county, on a city council legislation in that particular city. One of the city council members was quoted in the paper, saying he'd like to do a referendum on the issue. And that's, by the way, why it's not effective for 30 days, to give people a chance to do that. We could be in the unique position of having to try to continue this thing as a favor to the petitioners, at least until February 15th, and possibly till the election in November, to see whether or not there's a referendum, and if there is, whether it's successful or not. But the point is, that in order to allow this annexation, the commissioners have to look at 709.033. And one of the things you have to find in Section D is that the municipal corporation to which the territory is proposed to be annexed, has complied with Division B of Section 709.031, which is what I just read you, that they have to pass this by ordinance or resolution. Now, one argument I expect to hear from my friend, Mr. O'Brien, is the petitioners can't force city council to act in a certain time. But the fact of the matter is that they were supposed to act upon receiving the notice. And assuming the notices went out when they were supposed to, within seven days of the time you set this hearing, they got that notice sometime in late November or early December. So they had plenty of time to pass this thing, and to do it in such a time that would become effective by today's date, which is when you were going to set your hearing, and which you decided to do better than 60 days ago. So before I get into an opening statement, I would like to move that you just dismiss it, based on the case that the petitioners presented, specifically on the issue of, we don't have an ordinance. We have a document that was passed by four-to-three that doesn't become effective till a week or two after the 90 days is up, and two or three weeks from today's hearing. So you don't have an ordinance, and for that reason, I'd like you to kill this thing now. If you do not, I'm willing to proceed, or ready to proceed with the case. But I would ask that the Board of Commissioners consider denying this at this point.
Jerry?
Now I feel like that judge in Florida with all the demonstrators. First of all, I would indicate that I've had conversations with both of the attorneys prior to this meeting, so we've had some brief discussions regarding the law, and it is very complicated. As the commissioners may recall, on numerous occasions, we've had the question of whether we have to hear all the evidence on this matter within the 90-day time limit. As you probably recall, we have continued the Amherst annexation matter past the 90 days, but we did that with the consent of all the parties involved, and that's been our policy so far. My personal philosophy and my personal opinion on this is that it doesn't make a lot of sense to me that we can have a hearing, some issues be brought up, or some questions be raised, and not be able to continue it to get some further evidence, so that we can make a knowledgeable decision. So my personal philosophy on this is that we should be able to go beyond the 90 days. However, I have to advise you that two courts have ruled on this issue that I am aware of. One in Cuyahoga County, the Cuyahoga County Court of Appeals, and another in Stark County, Stark County Court of Appeals. And both of those courts have ruled that you cannot go past the 90 days. So the only two cases that I am aware of would indicate that my personal opinion is all wet, so. That's where the law stands on the issue. I've given this last case to both of the attorneys. I have indicated that out of respect to them, and to give them an opportunity to see if they can find other cases, or whatever, or other information, that they should have the opportunity to do that. So my recommendation, and I certainly want to give Mr. O'Brien an opportunity to comment on what Mr. Strader has presented, barring something that- on what Mr. Schrader has presented, uh, barring, uh, something that would change my mind from what Mr. O'Brien has to say, and we talked in the hall, so I have an idea of what he's gonna say. My recommendation would be that we not rule on the motion to dismiss at this time. Go ahead, hear the evidence, conclude the testimony today, give the opportunity for the attorneys to, um, submit any other legal documents they want to, to me, and then within our ninety days that we have to make a decision, um, I'll try to formulate a legal, uh, opinion for the commissioners. But as of now, what I have to tell you is that although I disagree with it, the two courts that have ruled on it have said, and seem to, uh, support the position that Mr. Schrader has put forward, that, um, this is not a final, uh, resolution, and we cannot continue it past the ninety days.
But which, and my question is, which ninety days are we talking about?
Well, we've got two ninety days. The first ninety days, which I think we're on day seventy-nine here, so according to the court decision, we would have to hear all the testimony, um, by the end of ninety days, which is eleven days from now, and unfortunately, we will not know within those eleven days whether or not this resolution has become final. And as Mr. Schrader has pointed out, if there's a referendum passed, we may not know until next November whether this thing is final, and that that would bring up a new, uh, set of circumstances, how, you know, that would put us past the ninety days that we have to even consider it, even if, so, there's a whole bevy of legal, legal questions here.
So because the, because the two parties can't agree, if they would've agreed, we could've continued, since the both parties can't actually...
We've done that on the basis that if, that if both parties agree, they have waived any legal objection there might be to it, and that's, that's what we've done with Amherst.
And with the dismissal, what, what they're saying is, since there really, I guess there isn't a, a resolution in Strongsville?
That's what Mr. Schrader's position is, that there is no effective, and that's, I'm sure, what Mr. O'Brien is going to challenge, whether or not the statute requires, Mr. Schrader's position is that we have to have before us, before the end of the ninety days, a resolution that's actually effective. Uh, I think Mr. O'Brien is going to state to you that he feels that all that is required is a statement from the city that they're gonna provide these services and that they provided them, and that's, that's summarizing, I guess, the two different positions.
But in the past, don't you need a resolution? And then we, is that when the ninety days start?
In the past, we've taken the position that we should have the resolution within the first ninety days from the day the petition was filed.
And when are they gonna get a resolution?
Well, we, we won't know whether or not that resolution is effective until the fifteenth of next month.
From Strongsville?
From Strongsville.
So we're in here with all these lawyers today and all these people, and we don't even have a resolution?
That's, that's...
Okay. I'm just a regular guy trying to make it...
I think Mr. O'Brien wants to argue.
Okay, I'm sure he's gonna talk, but...
Uh, Mr. O'Brien, um, do you have comments for the board?
I have several. With all due respect to the Fifth District Court of Appeals, uh, to which Mr. Schrader referred, and with all due respect to the Eighth District Court of Appeals, to which you referred...
And could you speak just a little louder?
I'm sorry.
You could take it out of there.
Yeah, with all due respect to Mr. Schrader, to the Fifth District Court of Appeals, and to the Eighth District Court of Appeals, to which, to which you referred earlier, I think he's just plain wrong. Uh, you do have a resolution that was adopted by the city of Strongsville. Moreover, what the code actually says, when you refer to 709.031 of the Ohioir Vice Code in subsection B, is that, "Upon receiving this notice, the municipal legislative authority shall, by ordinance or resolution," in, in a parenthetical, "adopt a statement, including what services, if any, the municipal corporation will provide to the territory proposed for annexation upon annexation." It doesn't say you will adopt a resolution or an ordinance, and, and by the way, Mr. Schrader, it was a resolution, not an ordinance. It says that it will adopt a statement. They did that. They adopted a statement by resolution. They complied with the code. The fact that the city of Strongsville can reconsider that resolution within thirty days is immaterial. Just as a court of common pleas can reconsider one of its judgments under a motion sixty B under the higher rules of civil procedure, this municipal body could also reconsider this decision. It doesn't mean that its judgment wasn't binding when rendered. That is my first point. The second point is that the cases cited by Mr. Schrader are, are distinguishable from the situation here. The cases he cited, first of all, had situations where the resolution was held months after the hearing of the county commissioners. In this instance, we have a resolution that was granted before the hearing. So to that extent, these cases really, you know, shouldn't govern the decision of this board. Another point is that, is that under Ohioir Vice Code, Section 709.04, the city of Strongsville will have the opportunity to reject this annexation. It really doesn't matter whether or not, to some extent, other than the technical legal points, whether or not this, whether or not this resolution is binding or not, because the city of Strongsville will have the opportunity one more time to reconsider whether or not they want this annexation to go forward. Its opinion, its statement is merely advisory. That's its intent, is to tell you at this point in the, in the process, that they intend this annexation to go through, and they will provide the services that are needed. It doesn't say that they definitely state that that's going to happen. That point in the process comes later. At this point, all the Ohioir Vice Code requires, all the legislature wants to know, is whether or not you think that this annexation is in the best interest of the property to be annexed, and whether it's unreasonably large. Those are the two things that you have discretion to decide under Section 709.033E of the code. So I would, I would say that you shouldn't dismiss this case at this point in time because, because really, the, the resolution was adopted, and, and the statement was adopted, and it was made, and you have before you a statement from the Strongsville City Council that says what they're going to do for this property. It's in evidence, even though there's a, there's a potential that it might change, at this point in time, it's a binding resolution that's submitted into evidence. The last point I'd like to make, then, is that the Strongsville City Council did issue this resolution at the earliest time possible that it could've done so, after receiving the notices required by the Ohioir Vice Code. They made their resolution and forwarded it to you. The fact that, the fact that somehow that might, there's no reason for that to be negated by some technical requirement of the code. And I believe that if we go across the street to the Ninth District Court of Appeals, to the, to the courthouse across the street, or if we appeal this to the Ninth District Court of Appeals, that that court of appeals will see the light, they'll distinguish the cases that Mr. Schrader has cited, and they'll say that there's no reason for this board at this point in time not to make a binding decision.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Schrader.
First off, I guess, if I am wrong, I'm certainly in good company. I've got at least six other judges who are Court of Appeals judges who feel the same way. Uh, more important, I think, though, is that this, uh, it's hard to know where to start here. The fact of the matter is that, um, these, this Board of Commissioners issued Resolution 2009-78 setting forth this hearing date, and you did it on December fourteen. If the agent informed the city council within seven days, as he was supposed to under the statute, then the city council's known about this since December twenty-one. That gives him time to read the doggone thing three times, and to pass it, and do everything they're supposed to by today. Second, with all respect to Mr. O'Brien, uh, if the statute indeed said what he said it said, he'd be right, but he left two words out when he read the statute to you, and they're kind of important words, because they're the words, "by ordinance or resolution." Let me read you the whole thing again. 709.031, "Upon receiving this notice, the municipal legislative authority shall..." Here's the words he left out, "by ordinance or resolution." Left those out, and then continued with the rest of it. "Adopt a statement indicating what services, if any, the municipal corporation will provide." The statute says it has to be by ordinance or resolution. And why is that important? It's important because of the findings this Board of Commissioners has to make. One of them is that they've complied with 709.031B. You can't make that finding when they haven't complied, and they haven't complied because it's not effective. And as Commissioner Moore, I believe, accurately said, "We got a bunch of attorneys here, we got a bunch of people here, we don't have one of the basic things we need, which is the ordinance." And we're not gonna know for sure until, at the earliest, February fifteen, the day after Valentine's Day, whether this thing's effective, and if, in fact, there's a referendum, we're not gonna go, no, till November. All I'm suggesting is you dismiss it today, kill it before it is born, and, and be done with it, and we don't have to go through two, two or three hours of hearing. Now, I'm ready to go to do that if you want, uh, and we're ready to do that, but it seems to me that we're all better off if we just dismiss the thing now and be done with it. It is not a procedural technicality, uh, that's one thing I always think is amazing. If, if you follow the statute, then that's the law, but if you don't follow the statute, then whatever you did wrong becomes a technicality. It's not. It's one of the findings you've gotta be able to make in order to allow this annexation to go forward, and you can't make it because they don't have one. It's not effective till next month, which is gonna be long after the hearing. Again, with all respect, I would ask you to dismiss it now. If you choose not to do that, let me know, and we'll go forward with our case.
Now, you're saying that after February fifteen, that's when it becomes a resolution? That's what you're, that's what you're claiming, correct?
It will be a resolution after February fifteen, assuming that the city council members or other folks in that city...
I'm not gonna, I'm just not, I don't wanna go there. What I'm trying to get is a timeline. So what we're talking about is, once you got the fifteenth and a resolution, what your, what your case is basically saying, start the ninety day hearing at that point. Is that what you're saying?
Well, what I'm really saying is that this guy ought to withdraw and start over, go back to city council, do the whole thing again, and the reason is that we don't have timely a resolution that's effective, and, and the effective date, by the way, is based on the city council clerk's letter to you that's forthrightly says it's not effective till February fifteen.
What I'm trying to get at is if, are we, are you looking to start over, not from Strongsville's point of view, but from our point of view, up here?
Yeah, start over from the petitioner's point of view. He resubmits everything, but let me give you some...
I don't know about resubmitting, I'm just saying, if you have a resolution, and are you, are you talking about going ninety days from the fifteenth of February?
No, I'm suggesting that he ought to withdraw this thing, or you ought to dismiss it, and then he can start over. He resubmits his petition, resubmits his map and legal description, and we start over. It's not so much different, by the way, than what happened about three months ago. Three months ago, they didn't have a resolution at all. I mean, nothing, not even, whether it was effective or not, they didn't even have a piece of paper, and I believe that they either withdrew, or this commission threw it out...
They withdrew.
Okay, they withdrew, so they attempted to do it right. I, I think that that's what they ought to do now, that you ought to dismiss it, or they ought to, uh, they're not gonna withdraw it, obviously. They ought to, you ought to dismiss it, let them start over again. I mean, they finally got the legal description right, by the way, and I would stipulate to that, your engineers has the legal description, the map is finally correct. You scheduled your public hearing, uh, timely, and they didn't get a resolution to you that's effective in time, so it seems to me they ought to just start over. And it's not so tough. They've done it at least once before already in this case, because they goofed up before. Maybe this time they'll get it right, but all I'm suggesting is that we ought to dismiss it and, and see what happens. Frankly, from a legal, from a lawyer's standpoint, I'd be just as happy if you didn't dismiss it, because obviously what's gonna happen is, I'm gonna appeal it, we've got a conflict maybe between districts, we've got some courts of appeals saying you can't do it, maybe other courts of appeals say you can't, that's one of the few free trips to the Supreme Court you got, but look at all the, I mean, my, my children will be warm and happy and have new shoes and everything, but why do that? You know, I mean, why go to the expense for the township and the city and everybody else?
And the county.
Yeah. So with all respect, I'm asking you to dismiss it, and if you don't, I'm ready to get going.
Okay, Mr. O'Brien, you have one more comment, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Ennis to comment on this.
First of all, if, if the court reporter did read back what I said, I did say "by ordinance or resolution." I read it verbatim from the code, Mr. Schrader.
Read it again, please, for the benefit of the board who's not looking at it. Would you do that?
Sure.
The whole thing?
Okay, and I was wondering, I have to actually read two sections, but 709.031 does state, uh, in subsection B, "Upon receiving this notice, comma, 'The municipal legislative authority shall, by ordinance or resolution, adopt a statement indicating what services, if any, the municipal corporation will provide to the territory proposed for annexation upon annexation.'" Mr. Schrader is right, it does say "by ordinance or resolution." My point is that they did pass that resolution, and you do have that statement, and it is in evidence. Unlike the cases that he cited, where the resolution was adopted after the closing evidence, here we have a valid resolution that merely can be reconsidered at some point in time. It doesn't mean that it will.
Thank you for that.
Second of all, wait, I, if I could, please, I have a couple more comments. Second of all, if Mr. Schrader would like to go ahead and appeal the decision of this board, he's more than welcome to, but what's gonna happen between the time Mr. Schrader appeals his decision, and the court actually holds a case management conference on that decision, is this annexation action probably will have been passed, at which point in time, Mr. Schrader's case will be moot, and his children will not have shoes, and they will not be worn, because Mr. Schrader will not get legal fees at that point in time, and at that point in time, this county will not have to expend any more money on legal fees, because the court will say, hey, the annexation's been passed, it's in the city of Strongsville, we don't have a case, we have nothing to decide here. So, so as far as that argument goes, he's just wrong, again. Lastly, what the code actually says in 709.033 is that, in the first sentence, "After the hearing on a petition for annexation, the Board of County Commissioners shall enter an order upon its journey allowing the annexation if it finds that all the requirements of the code have met," of which one is subsection D, which refers to the, uh, resolution in 709.031. It says, "After the hearing on a petition to annex," after the petition, after the hearing on a petition to annex, you have ninety days to make your decision. It doesn't say that at this point in time you have to decide whether or not, uh, you have all the evidence you need to make your decision. You can decide within that ninety day period whether or not you have all that evidence. Within that ninety day period, this resolution will become, as Mr. Schrader says, "binding and final," and it can't be questioned at that point in time, and at that point in time, you can render your decision. So I really don't think, because of all the arguments I've made so far, because of mootness, because, uh, the cases he has cited are not dispositive, uh, and because the code itself has been met in this circumstance, that we should go ahead with this hearing at this point in time, and if Mr. Schrader wants to, uh, he may file his appeal, and then after the property's been annexed, his appeal can be dismissed as moot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Ennis, as legal counsel to the board, would you like to summarize what is before us, and perhaps make a suggestion to us?
You know, the basic, what it's boiling, boiling down to at this point is, is whether or not, um, the document that you have in front of you, uh, complies with the statute, which requires that there be, uh, a statement adopted by the municipality. Mr. Schrader's, uh, argument is that, uh, it's not really officially adopted and effective until it's gone past that thirty days. And again, that is what both the court, and although I agree with Mr. O'Brien, there are some distinguishable facts in those cases. It certainly clear, appears from my reading of the cases from the Court of Appeals in Cuyahoga County and Stark County that they do agree with the position of Mr. Schrader. So I would have to indicate to you, based on the law that I have in front of me, uh, the law appears to be, uh, in agreement with Mr. Schrader's position, but again, that law is out of two different jurisdictions, none of which is controlling here, and, and I'd love to have a court case, so we could have a court in our jurisdiction tell me what it's supposed to be, but the best law out there seems to agree with Mr. Schrader's point of view, although, again, philosophically, I agree with Mr. O'Brien. That, that position does not, to me, seem to be real logical when you think out all the timeframes and everything that's involved, um, but the law is not always, uh, logical, so, um, if, if you're forcing me to say, what is my position today? I have to tell you that I think the best law out there seems to agree with Mr. Schrader's position. Again, I am more than, than willing to suggest that, uh, to go ahead with the hearing, hear the evidence, uh, and give counsel an opportunity to, um, submit, and, yeah, although I think they've, they've probably submitted all the law there is and all the arguments there are, so I don't know if there's going to be anything else out there, but, um, we could go ahead and have the hearing and give ourselves a little time to think about it. That's not always the best course, and that's, you know, you always like to have some time, but sometimes, um, there's some merit to just going ahead and, and, uh, for the best interests of everybody, making the decision, but, uh, again, if you want what I feel to be the best law out there today, that seems... Again, if you want what I feel to be the best law out there today, that seems to support Mr. Schrader's position.
Well, Mr. Schrader asked this board to dismiss this, correct?
Yes.
All right. But then you went on to suggest that you agreed with him, but also you suggested to the board that we might like to hear the testimony.
Well, I'm saying, we can withhold a decision on whether or not we want to dismiss it.
Okay.
Go ahead, hear the testimony, and then we have the 90 days to make a decision on, are we dismissing it on the basis of Mr. Schrader's motion? Or deciding it on the other evidence that's presented? There may be other things that defeat or support the annexation.
Okay. But I guess my question is, if we don't rule now on this motion to dismiss, that doesn't mean that we can't rule later on.
Right.
That was not clear to me.
Right. In trials and so forth, you hear judges hear that a lot of times. A motion will be brought forward, that they say, well, I want to get further research, I want to think about this. I'm not going to stop the trial and then come back. Let's go ahead and do what we can, and if I decide that that motion to dismiss is good, then you can ignore all the other evidence.
Okay. And I have one more question about the timeframe. I'm a little confused because of this motion to dismiss. I also believe I heard Mr. Schrader say that, or someone, that we are now at day 79, and that in order to be within the 90-day timeframe, we have 11 days. Does that mean that if we proceed today, it would be your recommendation that we have to render some type of a decision within 11 days?
No.
Okay.
According to these court decisions, we have our final day for hearing any evidence is 11 days from now.
Okay, thank you.
The issue is, how do we ever find out that counsel has adopted finally this provision if we can never have any evidence submitted? And that's my problem with Mr. O'Brien's, even though I agree with his argument, legally that's my problem. After 11 days, we technically can never hear any more evidence. You can never receive any other factual matters to consider. So after 11 days, how do we ever legally become informed that this motion became effective? And that's what this case is saying. You can't accept a letter from the council, well, 11, you know, after 11 days, saying, nobody objected, so it's effective. You can't consider that. So I don't know how we could ever learn legally, evidentiary-wise, that the resolution did become effective once we're past that 90 days. That's what that court case said.
Well, Jerry, the bottom line here is, it has to be for the general good of the territory, sought to be annexed, okay? And if we don't hear the other evidence, we're never going to know. Like, if that's correct, my understanding is correct, you're saying 11 days?
Right.
After 11 days, we can't hear any more testimony?
Right.
So if we don't hear the testimony, we can't make an informed decision as to whether or not this is going to be for the general good of the territory, because we're talking about a resolution here that I have some concerns with, and that is, you know, there's a lot of providing and conditions in this resolution, provided that the water supply is coming from Cleveland, provided that Northeast District will, Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District will accept the territory. These are provisions all through this resolution from Strongsville that will affect that area to be annexed. And I mean, if we're talking about putting 100 homes or 500 homes in that area, those people have to have water hydrants, they have to have fire servants, service, and if they don't have the water, they're not going to have the fire service that's needed there. So that, to me, I can't make an informed decision whether I know that that territory is going to have water and sewers.
Okay. Well, Mr. Schrader's argument is, that's the fifth condition, and you don't need to get to that if you can't get by the fourth condition, which is this resolution. So he's saying...
This is a part of the resolution. I'm saying, I see this in the resolution, that these are conditions that this resolution stands on.
Well, and I'm sure if we get into the evidence of this, Mr. Schrader has perhaps other arguments along the lines you presented. He's just saying, I don't think you have to go there, because they haven't even gotten to that.
How long would it start? What's the problem with starting over? Are you talking 90 days, or are we talking like another six months to a year?
Come to the microphone, Mr. Kokenda.
Because that's what we're talking about. It sounds like, to me, it's a timeline issue. And we don't have enough time. I mean, that's what it sounds like to me.
You know, Madam President, members of the board, I think this has to be obvious, that this is simply a stall tactic by Mr. Schrader and the residents that he represents from Columbia Township. And, you know, he knows full well that this was properly passed by the city of Strongsville. It's just another stumbling block they're attempting to put in our way from developing our land and doing what is right and proper for our land. It's not, you know, so we're not looking at somebody else's land. This is a stall tactic. I ask that you proceed with the public hearing. You have 90 days then, as to which time to take a vote. By then, the resolution will have gone into effect that the city of Strongsville has passed. You have a copy of it there. This is a stall tactic to force us to spend more money in starting over again. These things don't come cheap.
Mr. Kokenda, how can, I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I have to personally feel assured that that area that is proposed to be annexed will receive the water, because according to this resolution, it's stating over here, you know, they don't know where the water's going to come from. Is it going to be rural water? Because right now, rural water is servicing that area. Or is it going to come from Cleveland? Where are the sewers going to come from? So we may pass this annexation, and that territory may never get water or sewers. I have to be assured that it's going to have those services.
Those items would get specific approval from the city of Strongsville when the actual development plan is submitted to the city of Strongsville for development. Just a few hundred yards away is the city's Strongsville Fire Department and Rescue Department.
Yeah, but there's...
And they provide some of the services now in a reciprocal agreement with Columbia Township. So, you know, the water and the sewer will be made available by the city of Strongsville that they are stating in that resolution, that they have the capacity and the ability to provide it. And that, you know, so once we submit a development plan to the city of Strongsville, and it complies with their zoning requirements, then the services will be available to this parcel. Madam President, members of the board, this is just a stall tactic by their legal counsel, and we ask that you go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Kokenda. I believe that this is a technicality, but I believe that annexation cases are based on technicalities. The code is very specific about what the requirements are. And in the end, after all of these requirements are met, then we come to the part where the Board of Commissioners makes a finding on the information that's been presented to us. I think where we are today, Jerry, if I'm not phrasing this right, please help me out, because we are not attorneys here, but we are dealing with the stipulations of the code. Having said that, now, where was I going? I think that we have to decide, as Mr. Schrader has asked, whether we want to dismiss this petition based on the fact that the resolution/ ordinance will not be effective before February 15th, and we have a 90-day timeframe in which to accept information, and that timeframe ends before February 15th. We have the option to dismiss it. We have the option to go forward and hear the testimony today, and then consider what is presented to us. We have not given up the opportunity to dismiss the suit based on the technicality that Mr. Schrader's put forward. My question to the Board of Commissioners is, I think we have to make a decision whether we want to go forward and hear the testimony today, unless you're prepared to dismiss this annexation hearing this morning, as requested.
Well, that's...
Now, let me finish.
And like I, I'll repeat it again, I need to know if there's going to be, if there's a guarantee that they're going to have sewer service there and water service. And that's the basic service for the safety of the people. Safety and health issues are right there.
I'll be prepared to dismiss it.
Did you want to make that in the form of a motion?
Yes. I'll make a motion to dismiss the annexation request. I make a motion to dismiss the annexation request based on the, I believe it would be, Jerry, the resolution.
It would be on the basis that they cannot comply with 709.033D.
Correct. Did you get that?
I'll second that motion.
No, excuse me, sir. Discussion?
Yeah.
Does that mean it's dead?
It's not dead. I think what it means is, they have to refile it and come back, then they can go, because we only have 11 days. I don't like that.
Our petition was to dismiss the petition. I know, Mr. O'Brien...
I'm sorry, Mr. O'Brien, we can't hear you.
Mr. Carney says that he'll go ahead and refile the petition, withdraw instead of having you vote on it, because he'll just go ahead and get force the additional funds and, you know, run through the, run through the groups again. If it looks like you're going to go ahead and dismiss it, he'll say, we'll go ahead and withdraw petition, refile.
Oh, we already have a motion, though.
Do you have a motion?
Mr. Innes, can the mover withdraw his motion?
Yes, he can.
Sure. I'll withdraw my motion.
And I'll withdraw the second, then?
Madam President, on behalf of the agent or the petitioner, respectfully request to withdraw, Mr. withdraw our petition and reserve the right to refile it at a later date.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kokenda, would you come to the microphone?
Madam President, members of the board, as the agent for the petitioner, Mr. Carney, would respectfully request to withdraw our petition, withdraw our petition, and reserve the right to submit at a later date. Thank you.
Mr. Kokenda, the agent for the petitioners has asked to withdraw this petition and reserves the right to refile at a later date. Mr. Innes, does the board need to act on that request?
Uh...
To accept it?
I would, I would move to accept that, to withdraw.
I'll move to accept the withdrawal.
Second.
Any more discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, all in the audience. Everyone came here with a specific interest in this case, and I appreciate that it didn't proceed the way some would have liked. But I believe it's incumbent upon the Board of Commissioners to be in compliance with the provisions of the high revised code, and so we have acted accordingly, and we appreciate the petitioners withdrawing their request at this time.
I'm sure we'll see him again.
I would like to ask for a five-minute recess.
Ten.
The board will reconvene at 12:20 to conclude our business.
This is how it is every Thursday?
Watch this room clear up. Make a suggestion to all of those people interested in this issue. I talked to our assistant prosecutor, Jerry Innes, about this, and the attorney representing the township was here, and he heard some of my comments. A while ago, when I was township clerk, we had an annexation issue that came before the then Board of Commissioners, and it was between the city of Alurri and Carlisle Township. And Commissioner Corey, at the time, suggested that the attorneys representing the parties, and himself as an attorney, but I'll just insert assistant prosecutor Innes in this, sit down and see if there isn't some way that you can address all of the issues of the parties involved and come up with some type of a compromise so that, and this is just myself speaking, but I'm going to ask the board if they would agree to this. The property owners have certain rights, and they want to develop their property, and I believe that that is their right. I also believe that the township has the obligation to implement the zoning and look at the betterment of their community, and that is your right. And is there some way that the two of you could come together with the assistance of our assistant prosecutor, who has done wonderful things about negotiating agreements for us in the last few months, so that all parties' interests might be met, and that it wouldn't be necessary to come back here to request annexation? Because these people are interested in developing, and I think, my personal opinion is, that they can develop in Lorraine County. So I would ask, with the board's approval?
We were just discussing this a minute ago, and I think you have to include this also. Gene was telling me that the Board of Health has to be involved also, because right now, as I see it, the developer, the zoning is for two acres, two-acre lots. And this is another problem with the developer, because he wants to put these homes on smaller lots. And according to what Mr. Bilgram was saying, is that is contingent upon the Health Department, because for some reason, the Health Department won't allow smaller lots, and I don't understand. But I agree with you, Betty. I wish that everybody could get together. And I think that, I heard the developer at one point say that he would like the same thing. Annexation is not their total desire, it's that they want cooperation from Lorraine County to get that property developed. Like he said, he had it for 40 years, and he wants to develop it, and I can't blame him. And, you know, none of us want to lose that land.
Can I comment briefly on that?
Please do, Mr. Balgren. We're still being televised, so you might as well come to the microphone and state your name, please.
My name is Gene Balgren. I'm a trustee, chairman of the Board of Trustees in Columbia Township. We are not in opposition to developers in Columbia. Right now, our zoning is a 200-foot frontage, two acres for a single-family home. But we had to go to that position when you have septic systems, because the Health Department in Lorraine County would not issue permits generally in new areas unless you had two acres for your onsite system. And the reference was made by the applicant here before, that we are in opposition. We went to the sewer, Northeast Ohio Sewer, after this. We have been in the facility planning area of Northeast Ohio for sewer wastewater treatment for over 30 years. And we knew that. And anytime we wanted to, we would ask for it. The people of Columbia, and by a public hearing we had purposely on the question of sewers, turned out at 450 to 500 people, and they let us know they were not interested in us initiating putting sewers through Columbia. But that doesn't mean we're in opposition to a contractor that want to put a development in and go to the Northeast Ohio, which is the only facility right now, according to NAWACA, that has a right to treat sewage in Columbia, right now. And that's true. We have a letter on that effect. And we're open to that. This developer here, he can go to Northeast Ohio and get the sewer in. He has to get to it. Sure, he would like us to put the sewer down from the attachment point to him, because it costs him money to tax to it. That land, refers to as being owned by an individual, the tax records that I have shows that that land only transferred to MCK Limited about four years ago, four or five years ago. Sure, it might have been owned. But this developer has another parcel of land in Columbia right now that he's transferred over to a developer that's putting in about 40 or 50-some homes under our zoning right now, without sewers, under our zoning of two acres with 200-foot frontage and one family. So we're not in opposition to a developer, it's just that you need the sewer if you want to get by the Health Department requirement.
But can you get the sewers in just that area? It doesn't have to go through the entire township, does it?
Well, it has to go to the drop point of the interceptor line of Northeast Ohio, which sets at our border, right at the corner of Marks and Sprague Road. At that border, which is only 35 feet across our line, is the interceptor line. We have the approval and the comments already from Northeast Ohio, and Mr. Carney knows that we've met with him, and with his assistance, we've made much headway by just bringing that to light. But Mr. Carney could probably tell you that we've been in that facility planning area for quite some time, Ken, right? Yeah, and that's nothing new about that. We just never asked for it. And the Northeast Ohio would tell you that. Well, the people of Columbia didn't want us to ask for it. I make the comment facetiously that when we had that public hearing with 450 to 500 people there, they would have hung me from an aris tree if we said, yeah, we want to bring sewers into Columbia throughout. Now, that doesn't mean sewers can't come in by a tradition or aggression, to come in by developer-initiated. That can happen anytime. We won't resist that. And I think Ken Carney would agree too to that, right, Ken? Yeah.
But what's needed here is, do you need a mediator to work this out between the township and the developer?
Why did you ask that? Could I speak?
Please.
Mr. Carney, yeah.
Not related to the other Carney.
I'm sorry?
Not related to the other Carney.
I got cousins all over the place.
Okay.
We all came from the same Ireland. Bless them. All right. What to do? You may recall 86 people getting together, formulating their Comprehensive Land Use Plan Review Board meetings for a year. Committees, I had three. Net result, probably the first, if not the second priority was to update the sanitary sewer facility plant in Lorain County. Got one here, 1961. Doesn't even show the plant that's built in French Creek. Doesn't show the Phil Mariana Plant. And you know, every chance I get, I ask for a review of this, but quite frankly, I need the cash. Now, this is an opportune time to echo the problems you see in this particular township. This particular township has an advantage. It already has a future planning area. It already has a 42-inch main on its northerly doorstep to enter into. They're better off than any township that's in Lorain County at this point. I have their plan. I have a facility plan. I have locations of trunk lines in this plan from, I call it Neo-Sord, for lack of a better acronym, Northeast Area Wide Sewer Sanitary Sewer District, Regional District. That is why I'm here at this point. I would like your permission to bring to you a preliminary proposal for, to give you an idea of how, what that would cost to update this particular plant. Subsequently after that, you review that and possibly give me permission to go get some final proposals from at least two or three or five individual firms and then I'll present that to you to see what the actual cost would be. But I'd like to seek permission to seek a preliminary proposal for the update of this plan, as it's been echoed many, many times with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan Review Board.
Well, if you can give us some cost, I think we'd be happy to review it.
Do it next week.
But Ken, what I need is to know is do we need a mediator to work with the county and the developer? I mean, it seems to me that there's some friction in there that the developer is hesitant to work with the townships, whatever hard feelings there is there. I'd like to get past that and if we need a mediator, let's appoint someone.
I don't think it's between the developer. I think it's between the two sides, isn't it? Are you talking about...
Right. I mean, at this point, maybe Scott Attorneys and hopefully their two attorneys will get together. We've encouraged them, excuse me, we've encouraged them to do that and hopefully we show them the way and they'll take advantage of this opportunity.
Somehow, though, they have to be assured that the township is willing to work with them. That's all I kept hearing was that the township is not willing to work with them.
Well, no, go ahead. I don't want Ken leaving out here before I talk to him. That's all. We talked yesterday regarding what he just said, correct? That's, you're pretty much talking what we discussed.
Yes, we've worked very closely with all townships. As a matter of fact, I would imagine in the last decade, we probably have installed $9 million worth of sewers.
Right.
At their requests. We get this done very, very easily and this is regardless of the sewer that's Lorain negotiable, talking Sheffield Townships.
How long will it take to get a plan like this? I mean, I don't want to wait a year.
No, you want...
You know, I mean, if we're going to OK funds, I would like to see how long it would take to get the plan because we're going to have these type of meetings forever if we don't...
I understand. This would, this would help you very, very much and in that proposal, I will have a timeframe for you.
Timeframe? What are your thoughts on a sanitary director who could be a sanitary engineer?
Beg your pardon?
What are your thoughts on a director reporting to the, Mr. Cortez, as a director that is just a sanitary engineer that could spearhead this project and take this project and run with it?
The best solution for that would be to have that consulting engineer perform those duties because that's, it's a small timeframe where he'll be...
No, I'm not talking about what you're asking. I'm just saying as part of the, maybe have this consultant recommend whether or not we should have a full-time sanitary engineer as a director that, if the county's going to, you know, there's a lot of issues here that are going to come down whether or not it's Lorco, whether or not it's the county, whether or not it's this company or whatever. I mean, I'm looking for recommendations on should we have a full-time director overseeing this project since I think there's a lot, you've got a lot of projects on the table, correct?
My recommendation is no.
Okay.
You do not have that extensive work on a daily basis. That's why we rely on consulting firms intermittently, incrementally, that they're available to us in 24 hours' notice at that point. No, as I say, we've done $9 million worth of sanitary sewer in a decade. We didn't do it every day.
Right.
All right. Couple of years there, there was zero activity because there was no request, so we maintained. Our entire system generally has in a neighborhood of 1,500 customers.
But the county controls.
That's correct. There's another additional 1,500 customers that are entered into the system of Lorain based on a grant they received and new additional trunks they've installed, availability of Sheffield Township entering into their systems, which is additional 1,500. The billing is performed by the water supplier, in this particular case, the city of Alariah. But we have 1,500 customers. It's not a large group of people.
But it's gonna be...
And we're taking advantage of recent retirees. This is the first year we've been in the black and I'll take a little credit for that.
So, you'll be coming back next? Are we asking them to come back for just a discussion?
I'll submit to you the preliminary proposal and then you can contact me and when you want to meet.
I'd like to move as fast as we can.
But to echo my other statement, no, there's no need for a full-time director because of, and I can show you what the accomplishments being performed by the division. At this point, we respond to the need. Sometimes there's very little need at a certain point in time and sometimes, as you see today, there is some needs and those are met on response to those requests. And we act in an expeditious manner when we receive those requests and if proof is in the sewers we've installed in Sheffield Township.
Thanks.
I'll get those to you as soon as I can.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can you give one more quick response to the question about cooperation with the contractor?
Please.
Yeah, that's an important issue.
You know, and this contractor is talking about no cooperation. We have three major contractors building all the time in Columbia. We have a 200-acre one going up right now. We have an 84-acre one that's in the process of going to planning. We have one of eight homes on 20, 30-some acres and these are all going in under contractors that are supplying, are putting the homes up right now. This developer is not building any homes in Columbia. He's just sitting on land that he wants to see get sewed to hopefully he could get 3.2 homes per acre on. I doubt if Columbia would ever go to that anyhow. I'm speaking on behalf of my own personal opinion. We would drop down our zoning, sure. We would be realistic. We went to two acres because we had to because of the county Health Department. But that doesn't mean that we wouldn't go down. We have developments of a half acre. I live in the development of a half acre. So, what I'm seeing is this contractor developer is saying no cooperation. He's not even building in Columbia. He just recently turned property over to one of our good developers that's taken it over himself and he sold the land to him, we understand, and it's going in under our zoning. So, I just wanted to clarify, we're not in opposition to developers. And we have one major one with 40 or 56 homes that's dry-sewered, ready for a tie-in, close to this interceptor line.
I think they need to know that. They need to know that you're not in opposition.
They know that.
Because I sense through what they're saying, I sense through what they're saying and Jim Kokenda came in and talked to me yesterday and they are of the impression that the township is in opposition to development. Somehow, that has to be, the gap has to be filled in there. You know what I mean?
Well, what they say and what's factual apparently is two different things, right?
But I mean, if they're under that, that thought, well, then somehow...
Well, when I can show you the number of homes going up by the figures I just gave you, how are we in opposition to development?
Maybe a letter to them stating that you're not in opposition, that you'd like to work with them would help. I don't know.
Well, they came to us about three months ago with one other parcel of land they owned and developing under a possible planned unit development. Good. We said, okay, submit it and we'll look at it and work out something. It never came back. Never came back.
Gene, you made the comment about half-acre lots. Does your zoning, your present zoning allow half-acre lots if in fact it is sewed? Do you have that provision in your zoning?
Well, we don't, we don't have the sewers in. If sewers were available, we would relook at the zoning in an area that had sewers. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But you don't have it now?
Well, we don't have it because we only have three subdivisions that are sewed and that zoning is set already. The subdivisions, we don't change. But we have our two-acre in the rest of Columbia called our three because there are no sewers. And you can't get a permit to build from your Health Department unless you have two acres. So, if there is a sewer, definitely we'll reconsider the size of the lot.
So, you're not opposed to relooking at that?
No question about that.
Okay. Then I would really, I think the board is in agreement that we would like Jerry Ennis to work on this with the attorneys that were here today to see if we can't come to some agreement, how we might proceed with this issue. Is that agreeable? And then, Mr. Carney, you're going to give us a proposal in a week? Thank you very much. Thank you all for your discussion regarding this matter. Madam Clerk, where were we?
Number G.
Uh, yes, we were.
The operator's last year's office proposed Lorain County Probate Court. The option of an alternate use of three acres children's home is open in Ohio in Amendment Resolution Number 00-1153. Any nonprofit or governmental use that primarily benefits children, but being understood that primarily benefit children shall mean that a minimum of 75% of any nonprofit or governmental service services benefit children, either used or useless, shall directly render any benefit to children.
So, move.
Second?
Discussion?
Yes. Why 75%? Why not 100%?
Just as background, this is a follow-up to Mr. Flanagan's contact with the Attorney General's Office as to what they would approve and they indicated they wanted to have some further definition of what we meant by a nonprofit agency that benefited children. As a practical matter, Commissioner, there probably aren't really too many organizations that don't do some other kind of activity and they just thought, well, we wanted to come up with some figure that's, that's going to give you some degree of leeway so that we make certain that it is substantially for children.
Okay.
But they just thought if you went with something like 100 or 90%, you, again, might be not giving yourself, you know, a lot of these organizations decide to expand, you know, like, you know, I think the Boys Club was once the Boys Clubs and now it's the Boys and Girls Clubs. So, you know, who knows? One of these organizations might expand to do something for the parents of children also and you don't want to get in a bind where you're cutting them out of the picture.
And this will give the Board of Commissioners control on who shall, or who should participate?
Yes.
And the Attorney General's Office seems to be...
We'll file the request with the probate court and the attorneys generals indicate they would have no opposition to this language.
How long will that take?
Well, depending on how quickly we can get a hearing before the probate court or how quickly they would decide it.
Is this like a month, a week, or?
It won't be a week.
Are you looking at six, are you looking at six months?
Um, I would think a couple of months.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
It might go, but if you want my honest assessment, I would, I would say a couple of months.
I'd always want that.
Madam Clerk? Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Any other old business?
I have none.
I have none.
Pending issues?
Down here?
I have none.
New business?
None.
None.
A couple of comments? We lost everybody.
Hey Gloria, comment.
Comment?
Hi.
Wow.
Can we more about that? That's how we...
I move the reading of the board correspondence be waived.
Second.
No discussion on that? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
That's all I can say.
I'll just, under item number five, those NAWACA project notification response forms, they were in, oh, yeah, I can find them. They were in board business and they're talking about some of the projects that are going to be done in Lorain County in the future, monies that they have applied for tip money and some of the projects...
That's applying for it though, right?
Right.
Okay.
But they're getting into the mix.
Okay, good.
And there were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of them for Lorain County and they had a form attached to them if we approved or disapproved and we were supposed to respond by February 12th. We don't normally do that. We just kind of let it go. But I thought these are all good projects for Lorain County. If the board is interested, I'd like to move that we are in favor of these projects.
Especially with the letter we're sending.
Yes.
Can I get copies of this then? Are they in the board?
Yeah. I made them from what was in board business.
Does this tie into the case with Lorain that they wanted?
No, because that, this is different pots of money. This is set transaction improvement project. NAWACA has different pots of money, but, um, I saw it.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, we can, no problem.
You want a second, Pat?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Good then. Roxanne, will you see that those forms go back with the resolution number?